At this time, the great, I'm sorry. We are coming into session, we've been in workshops, back into open session at 7:07. And at this time, the Grapevine Colleyville Independent School District Board of Trustees and Central Administration, we will... Thank you all very much. Since it is the summer, we normally have students that come and lead our pledge and talk to us about what great things are going on. But tonight, we're going to have Doug Noel lead us in the United States pledge and Texas pledge.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Doug, any highlights?
Yeah.
Doug, you bring anyone with you? Let us take pictures. Thank you, Doug.
... into the electoral porch. So, why for us here in GCISD, just to give a little glimpse of it. So, following over just student interest, we asked, did a lot of surveys, get a feel for what it's looking like, and we had 70% of students overall that interested in gaming, let's just say gaming in general. So, when we want this stuff, we want to look at ways to remove different barriers to engage all students, right? And when we look at every student and what opportunities we have, it's just another avenue we can approach to have opportunities for them to participate in. There's multiple career path opportunities, petition potential, sorry, for offset of tuition. And as you see there, 200 colleges give scholarships. This year, over $15 million alone just towards esports scholarships. And we'll talk a little bit about what, how that's starting to impact us here in the district as well. And the common areas that one would think is the time back to STEM STEAM programs, general computer science, and those realms altogether. But esports for us is more than just the game development. It's the character development, the collaborative nature, the streaming, communication, broadcast, marketing, there's all different types of aspects to esports for us. So, what it looks like for us here in the district, it is, as Dr. Ryan mentioned, not a UIL sanctioned sport at this time, just for the first time. Last week, UIL actually brought it up and discussed briefly about esports in the future. But we do follow all guidelines of esports of UIL, you know, the traditional no pass, no play, those kind of things. We also aren't involved in any of the over violent video games, so that is to some students, don't make them very happy that we don't play some of these really crazy games, but we do focus on games that aren't related to violence of that realistic nature overall. In-person gameplay is important as well. All of our teams at both high schools compete in person, so we have gaming facilities at both, both of them schools you can see up there. We do play in person twice a week, and then they have practice as well. And then we've taken a step further and pulled in our students as we do with Student Voice to really start curriculum development. So, we are building out curriculum courseware around esports that will cover all aspects of the game, again, from the marketing, streaming, collaborative nature, team nature, all those kind of things overall, to online video play. What we looked at this year, we had 75 total esports athletes between both campuses. Of those, 70% of those reported that they weren't involved in any other campus activity, and that was a big win for us. We're capturing some students that really didn't have other places that they could be a part of on campus. We did reach the Central US semifinals for both campuses, so Central US league, we'll talk with one of our athletes here that made it all the way up to the finals. Two game titles are played, probably be like, I have no idea what those are, right? League of Legends and Rocket League are two of the games that are big in the industry that are played there. The easiest one to describe is Rocket League, it's just like soccer, but with cars, so we'll just leave it at that. And we had featured play at DreamHack, it's one of the largest events, you'll see on the far left there, or far right, one of the largest events here in the DFW Metroplex, where our kids got to compete on the big stage for some prize money a couple of weekends ago as well. And we've already been reached out, since one semester, we had two college recruiters already calling in, checking on our student athletes as well, for potential scholarships and future play into their organizations, which was quite surprising, to be honest with you, for just six months into a program and developing the curriculum building, to have collegiate colleges already calling and talking to us about the program is exciting overall. One of the, the next couple of things is what we're becoming kind of known for our esports, we've been featured this year in three national publications around educational technology for esports. We do multiple webcasts around the world for esports. We'll be presenting in four high-level sessions in about two weeks at ISTU, which is the largest educational technology conference. And we've already been invited to three different conferences to bring our kids and coaches to talk at events this coming school year as well. And just this week, and today, we started the first hosting of esports coaching clinic. We had over 20 school districts, 45 different coaches from around the state that are here this week to learn about coaching esports and how we can develop that for more school districts across the state of Texas. So, I'm going to bring up Kyle to talk to us. Kyle Carpenter here. I picked somebody so I would remember the name. Kyle, come and visit with us a little bit here about esports. We always like having our students come in the summertime, so I drove them out here. Kyle was on one of our top performing League of Legends teams, so we'll have him talk a little bit about his experience in esports.
So, really, starting off, a lot of us were really kind of hesitant to like, talk to each other, because that was a big thing about this opportunity, is we were all kind of hesitant about it, because everyone was like, making jokes about it, right? But then there were the some of us that were actually starting to get interested in it. And it was nice getting to talk to each other and meet like-minded people. It really helped us grow as a team. Games that we were playing, we were getting to actually really work on teamwork and, you know, coordination, and just really learning how to better, I guess, work with other people. Get back into participating in school activities without having to throw away an entire schedule on having to go to other types of sports activities and band practices and such.
Talk about your experience at the competitions that you went to.
At the competitions? So, our experiences were basically, we'd all meet up, we'd go to our center that we had everything set up in, and basically, we would get to, we wouldn't have to per se meet the other team, but we would all be together in our team, so we could all just, you know, talk to each other, make sure everything's going right, we'd, you know, go through like strategies and whatever for the games. And basically, it wasn't as big as like, being on a field or anything like that, but it was like, it was basically the next best thing. It was basically giving us an opportunity to not just sit around at home, but get up, go to school, you know, get in a space that was dedicated to what we were here to do, and just help us connect and...
So, you were playing these games before you actually joined esports?
Yes.
Is that, I'm just trying to understand.
Yes.
Okay, so then, some of your classmates that are now involved as part of this team, were you all doing it outside of esports before, and then you all came together? I guess, I'm just trying to understand, so please, be patient here, but I'm just trying to understand how it all works. Do you have a coach for the practice, and then do you, are there other schools here in the area that are doing that as well? I mean, those are all the kinds of...
So, out of the other schools that are doing this, we have Grapevine Colleyville, or Grapevine High School that also plays, and we got to play them a little bit in the different games that we were matched up against. Yes, most of us were playing the games that we were playing about a year at least to before joining esports. We basically joined knowing how the game was already played and just kind of got to drill down better teamwork and such like that. We did have a coach, he was very nice, at least at Colleyville. But, yes, and he, he really helped rally us all together, you know? At first, we were all kind of distant and separate, but he really just was there to mostly help us get to know each other and get us to participate with one another.
So, how many members make up a team?
It depends on the game, but for the game I played, which was League of Legends, five.
Okay. And then, is it, is it gender neutral in terms of girls and boys?
We did have one girl player this year, and yes, so it's gender neutral, it doesn't matter what gender you are or whatever. It's basically just if you have experience, or even if you don't, and if you want to come and learn, they were able to come and play.
You talked about strategy, you know, we've got state champ baseball players here, they talk about strategy, they look at each team, look at the pitchers that are up, and look at the tendencies of the batter and so forth. So, you said, you mentioned strategy, so is that strategy towards the game you're playing, or is that strategy towards the game you're playing and the other high school that you may be playing as well?
Yes, it is also against the other high school you're playing.
Okay.
Because, especially for some of the high schools we were going against, they had their own broadcasts and streams and everything like that. We were able to go and watch their plays and go and look up their, their character scores and see what characters they played the most, how they played them, and...
So, you actually got game film?
Yes.
That's kind of surprising.
There's no way, then he said, yeah.
You have game film, analytics, they review stats, they know what different players are going to do, and pre-watch what they're playing, so they know how they're going to play against them. There's analytics built into the programs, even then, I'll add analytics back to how reactive you are in certain features of the game. And that's where the coach really helps to kind of build up that. Just so you go back, in DFW right now, there's, in our league, there was three other school districts, that's grown pretty quick, since we probably had across the Central US, there was 30 school districts in that, so we could be playing against Chicago tonight, or down to Katy, or Houston, if that can be...
So, what would a university or college be looking for when they, and you were saying there's recruiting and so, and scholarships, scholarships available? So, what are they looking for? I mean, what's, what's their objective or goal in terms of trying to attract these students?
So, what they look for usually is good teamwork, a solid handle on their own operation in the games and such, and then just like, the ability to grow in that, so...
Okay, so you would go up there and you would play, but you wouldn't like, major in that, right? I mean, there would, or is there, are there universities that are starting to offer that as a field of study now?
Absolutely, so there's two universities that announce official plans for degrees, and several more that are in development. There was just an article last week from Tesla, talking about the majority of their employees were gamers and came from the game development area, so it's that mindset that a lot of them were looking towards. Colleges around here that we have established partnerships, UNT, UTD, Texas Westland, and UTA, we actually work closely with their, their teams on campus to kind of help build our program as well.
And on your slide, I think on one of them, you had curriculum development. Would, back up a little, yeah, right there, the next to the last bullet, would you talk to us a little about that?
So, on the curriculum development side, looking how we can develop a course that would cover all aspects of gaming, so from the communication side, the marketing ability, the online broadcast streaming side of it, of course, you have your traditional team play, collaborative nature. So, we're developing a course tied to all the various teacs that would stretch across, that we could offer at the high school level. The goal, working with these colleges, because colleges too are having a hard time trying to decide, find, attract and identify proper players, you know? There isn't the matrix out there in esports yet, you know, how fast you're in the 40 and those kind of things. So, when we approached colleges and asked for, what are you looking for, they kind of gave us some insight. We're developing a course that we can build towards that, so possibly we can build towards a certification program, and have our students certified in esports, so that they have that additional opportunity to put to colleges instead of somebody that supplies, that, hey, I like playing games.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was asking in terms of, since it's not UIL sanctioned right now, but I was curious in terms of TEA, whether there would be a, a per se state curriculum or mandated curriculum that we would follow that would be consistent across the board for all high school students, and so that's why I was curious about that.
So, we'll go in under District of Innovation with our courses, and it's approval for TA, like we do with our others. And we're working with our partnership with Dell, that has a higher outreach, we're there with expanded programs, Alienware is their big gaming company, they've worked with us and brought in some industry experts to help us kind of write that, because there's huge training facilities for this, I mean, they go like pro athlete training facilities, and so everything, even down to the nutritional, fitness, fitness aspect of it, is involved in the program as well.
And, and is there a age requirement, or minimum requirement? Do you have to be high school students, or...
Right now, we're focused mainly at high school level. We're looking at bringing it down lower, now we're probably the entry-level stuff, like some of our Minecraft, not too much a competitive game in nature, then to build up the program to the more competitive esports.
Like I say, this is amazing, because we talked about, back in 2010, when we did League 2021, we talked about that we have to educate these students for jobs that aren't even going to be there. And here we are, 10 years down the road, we're just, or nine years down the road, and we just did League 2.0, and here we are, you had a curriculum that wasn't in college, and now it is, you got two universities with it. We have a team that came for, and drawing students in, that didn't participate, participate in band, and it's a team, and you're sitting there talking about teamwork, collaborative working with others, and your potential to grow and develop for college and scholarship. I mean, it's, it's amazing, and then even now, on TV, you even see commercials for it. I mean, it's like, be prepared for game day. I mean, it's, it's amazing, so thank you for coming and speaking tonight, giving us your time, but it's awesome that what y'all are doing and what your students are doing and what the program's progressing towards.
Say the outpouring from our teachers and also the parents, and we've actually had some from other districts call and say, hey, y'all have transfer programs, and I was just blowing my mind, I'll be honest with you, is, is how big it's grown and what the potential is overall.
Right there, you said 84 million.
Yeah.
Or 89 million people are watching, the second only behind NFL.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a crazy amount of money, of viewership, so they're watching this.
And it truly shows that GCISD, there is something for everyone.
Absolutely.
This is great. Good job.
Great, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle and Kyle, and Kyle wisely exits as fast as he can. He gets another question, so, that's good. First recognition tonight is for our Special Olympians. We want to recognize the GCISD Special Olympics teams that competed at the Texas State Basketball Championships in Arlington in May. Two teams and one individual from GCISD won gold medals, and so, we're going to ask trustee Mindy McClure to meet you, and when I call your name, if you could come up front and get your certificate. First of all, well, I'm going to announce his name anyway, winning individual gold medal in basketball skills competition with Grapevine High School is Andrew Boushra. And Andrew, I believe, is out of town today, thanks for summertime. So, we've got some members of some gold medal teams that I'd like to call up front, from Colleyville Heritage High School, we've got Millie Pamaro. Tyler Francis. Bailey Vaughn. And from Grapevine High School, Micah Slaton. We'd also like to recognize some adults that are with our Special Olympians, Tony Gaffarin. And Tisha Turlo. And of course, our Executive Director of Special Services. To join us for this awesome picture, I would appreciate it.
... maybe for a living, or maybe at the collegiate level, but what's crazy about, as I've talked to this about, to my colleagues and different people, that you have an MVP, and you had a starting pitcher that may never play this game again, yet they were integral parts of what went on when we got crowned state champions at Dell Diamond. So, this is a really neat group, and I'm just so glad you got to get to experience this and meet these guys tonight. So, I don't know how this might, there we go. So, you heard the orders from Dr. Ryan, you're going to tell your name, class that you're in, where you may be going to continue your educational and athletic career. All right.
Hi, I'm Jacob Guerrero. I just graduated, and I'll be going to University of New Mexico in the fall. Oh, to play baseball.
I'm Everett Owens, I graduated, I'm going to University of Texas at Austin to study biomedical engineering.
Give your positions as you go as well.
I'm Eddie Ramos, number 11 on varsity. Not, I don't know where I'm going for college yet, because I'm a junior, class of 2020. So, talking to a couple of places, but hopefully somewhere good. At centerfield.
Hey, I'm Jacob Zapor, outfielder, just graduated.
I'm Jack McTye, I just graduated. I just graduated, I'm going to Oklahoma to study marketing, and I was the pinch runner.
I'm AJ Smith, IDH, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Cole Vicrotal, I'm a junior, and I pitch and play first base.
I'm Aiden Caputi, I'm a pitcher only, I just graduated, and I'm going to Purdue to study aerospace engineering.
Max McKernan, just graduated, going to UNT, studying business, and I'm the backup catcher.
I'm Jagger Heavison, I'm a sophomore.
I play middle infield, third base and pitch, yeah.
Coach, would you introduce your assistant coaches and anybody else that you would like to, at this point?
Yeah, this thing takes a lot of people, and these, these kids deserve every bit of the attention that they've gotten, but it is so gratifying to have, I'll get choked up talking with this, to have people recognized, because this stuff doesn't happen with, without great coaching. And the one that leads the pack with that is our pitching coach and varsity assistant, and he's here with us tonight, his name is Chris Haney. So, he was, he was just an integral part in everything that we've done. Our other assistants that couldn't be here tonight are John Pavliska, Scott Pugh, and Rush Atkinson, so all of those guys had, had parts in, in a special, special year for the Panthers.
Well, thank you very much. We're so proud of our Panthers, not only for winning the gold medal, but because they represented this community, they represented their school with character, with pride, with poise, you know, you overcame adversity, you know, great leadership, but most importantly, with class. And I'll tell you, I've traveled, just since, just since you've won the game, I've traveled to four statewide meetings, and I've had so many of my colleagues that have come up that have congratulated me on your behalf because of how you conducted yourself on and off the field, and it matters. People can tell in the stands whether people have character or not, they can tell whether you're a good team or not, working together, and superintendent after superintendent said, thank you and congratulations for how you can... We can tell who you are, and thank you very much. We know that wherever you, wherever you go, whenever you leave GCISD, you're going to do great things, and we really are honored to have you here tonight, and we're excited to watch what you do into the future. Thank you very much for being here.
Underclassmen, have a seat. Perfect, thank you. We've got some neat plaques that we're going to get to present to our school board members as well.
Hey, all right, congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Hey, best wishes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Coach, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, thanks, good luck to you, enjoy watching the play.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Underclassmen, next year too.
So, from our students, now to keeping our students safe.
efforts in displaying of identification, building access, and security. And I will say, our high school principals and middle school principals, it's difficult, it's pretty easy to get them to display their identification if it's a gold medal. It's really hard if it's just an ID card. And so, they've really been working on that. And we're going to ask trustee Jesse Rodriguez to present the certificate. The ability to identify all people on campuses is of utmost importance to GCISD. And we have implemented a two-pronged plan that requires all secondary students to wear their school-issued identification while on campus, and distributed door access badges to all high school students. And the district also provided signage and instructing students to keep all campus exterior doors secure. And so, I'd like to ask Alan Smith, the GCISD Director of Emergency Management and School Security, to come forward and receive a certificate. Also by earning this award, the district also receives $1,000 to be used toward risk management efforts. And we, you know, all of us, I believe, have seen the fruits of Alan's labors. He has done such a tremendous job of working through a very complex situation, which is our school security. And a person that works with him is Ruben Aldaz, and that Ruben also is kind of behind the scenes and does a lot of work. And it's a very, like I say, it's a very complex situation. But Alan, we really appreciate the way you go about your business, the way you handle yourself with, not only with our campus people, but also with people that have questions in our community. You're always willing to listen to them and to talk to them about their thoughts and concerns about school security. And really, folks, it's about the most important thing that we do is keep our kids and our staff safe while they're under our care. And so, thank you very much, Alan. Let's give Alan a round of applause. Next, we want to recognize Eric Tong. Eric, if you'll come forward and meet trustee Doug Noel up front, we'll talk a little bit about you, Eric. So, Eric is going to be an eighth grader this next year at Cross Timbers Middle School. In this past year, Eric was part of prestigious Duke University Talent Identification Program, or TIP. That's the seventh grade talent search. And students qualify for the seventh grade talent search by scoring at or above the 95th percentile on grade-level standardized tests. Additionally, Eric earned the title of Scholar of Distinction, which is given to students who receive a perfect score on at least one section of the ACT or the SAT. He also earned the William and Dorothy C. Bevan Scholarship, which is awarded to two, the two seventh-grade talent search students who have the highest combined SAT evidence-based reading and writing and math score, as well as to the two students who have the highest ACT composite score. So, this is like nationwide. Recipients are recognized at the Duke TIP recognition ceremonies and receive a full scholarship to attend the TIP's Summer Studies Program. Congratulations to Eric Tong. Let's give Eric a round of applause.
Are we looking at future delegatorians?
We might be, we might be. Alex, Alex, let's have, can you come up here and take a picture with Eric as well? Eric, would you like to introduce your dad or any other family members that are here?
Oh, it's just my father.
Oh, come on.
Just your father.
Come on.
He hasn't helped you get here or get along right.
But I would also like to thank GCISD for allowing me to telescope, and also the spy of the government, because it's been very nice to have them.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you for being here.
Now, you thanked your dad, now when you go home, you need to thank your mom, okay?
Yeah, right. That concludes tonight's recognition portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. You feel smarter since you get to be with there?
He just wants it to rub off.
I'm ready to ace the ACT.
Oh, goodness, we'll move on. Open forum, and I don't believe, no one's signed up for open forum. We'll move on to public hearings. Public hearing to discuss the 2019-2020 budget.
The law requires us to hold a public hearing to discuss the budget prior to approval. And so, we're talking about the 1920 budget today. We're going to start out talking about the general fund. That is our largest fund that is the daily operations of the district. I'm going to start off talking a little bit about House Bill 3. This budget that we are proposing tonight is based on House Bill 3, which was signed into law by the governor on June 11th, which was last Tuesday. Statewide, this law increased spending 11.6 billion. For public school funding, that was an increase for the biennium of 6.4 billion, and it also included property tax relief of 5.2 billion. It reduces Robin Hood statewide and includes some compensation increase requirements. I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about House Bill impacts GCISD. The preliminary increase in overall funding is 3.1 million. It includes a reduction in Robin Hood of 14.4 million. And it also includes a reduction in maintenance and operation tax rate. So, we adopt the tax rate in September. So, when we do that, we will adopt a tax rate of 97 cents. The 2018 tax rate was $1.04, so that is a reduction of 7 cents. This will ultimately reduce tax collections 10.3 million. And then, the compensation increase requirement for GCISD from House Bill 3 was 936,000. These are all based on preliminary increase in funding. I want to walk through this slide with you, because this shows the impact on our overall funding for GCISD. Because I know there's a lot of talk out there that House Bill 3 reduced Robin Hood. And that is true. It did reduce Robin Hood. But it does not mean that whatever our Robin Hood reduction was, that that's additional money in our hands. So, you have to look at all three pieces of the funding formula to determine what the overall impact of House Bill 3 was. So, that's what this chart shows. I have line one is what our M&amp;O tax collection is. So, under the old law, we would have tax collections of 159.8 million. Under House Bill 3, those tax collections will be 149.5. So, that's a reduction in taxes that we'll be collecting of 10.3 million. Then, there's the state revenue portion, which because we do have a large tax base, our state revenue is a smaller piece of our funding. But we actually are going to see a decrease in our state revenue of about 966,000. That's just related to different elements of the, pieces of the funding that they've changed. But then, line three is the Robin Hood payment, or the recapture payment. So, under the old law, we were looking at a Robin Hood payment of 63.6 million. Under House Bill 3, our Robin Hood payment is now going to be estimated to be 49.2 million. So, that is a decrease of 14.4 million. So, line four, and I circled that in red to kind of show that it's all those pieces together really equal our 3.1 million increase in overall funding. So, once again, because recapture decreased 14.4 million, that does not mean that's money in our bank. That just means that overall, our preliminary funding increased 3.1 million, because it is offset or includes that reduction in state revenue and M&amp;O tax collections. Now, how House Bill 3 impacts GCISD on the compensation side, the law reads that in a year in which the basic allotment increases, 30% of the gain in revenue per ADA must be used for compensation increases. And of that amount, 75% goes to classroom teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses. And 25% goes to other employees. The law goes into further definition that compensation for teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses with more than five years of experience must be prioritized and differentiated. And we will be proposing a 2019-20 proposed compensation plan that will meet House Bill 3 requirements later this evening. Now, just to break down what I just said on the compensation requirement, we would take the estimated increase in revenue of 3.1 million, multiply that times 30%, and that is 936,000. So, that is our requirement from House Bill 3. 75% must go to teachers, librarians, nurses, and counselors, and 25% to other staff. So, the chart down there below spells out what our House Bill requirement is for those individual types of employees. So, for teachers, librarians, nurses, and counselors, we're required to do 702,000 in compensation increase. The compensation plan that we're proposing for recommendation, it would increase for those employees 2.5 million. And then, all other employees required to do 234,000, and the recommendation would be 874,000. So, overall, the total comp increase would be 3.4 million. So, this, basically, a recap, GCISD will provide 2.4 million more in compensation increases than required by House Bill 3. And more than 100% of the additional funding from House Bill 3 will be provided to employees with compensation increases. This is talking about the parameters that were used in developing the budget, and we've been talking about these since January in our budget workshops. But the first thing is, this budget is based on House Bill 3. It is also based on the M&amp;O tax rate of 97 cents, which is a reduction from $1.04. It's based on 7% increase in local taxable values, 8.5 in state comptroller values, enrollment of 13,020 traditional students, and 895 I-University Prep students. Also includes a flood control revenue of a million, and then it includes an adjustment in payroll of 1%. That's the 1 million, which is based on historical trends in unpaid abscences, vacant positions, and lower salaries. This is the information that just shows you what the budget looks like by object code, and that's basically the type of expenditure. So, broken out by payroll, contracted services, supplies, and other. I just want to point out that 87.4% of our budget is in payroll. And this is just a picture to show you, that big purple piece is the payroll. This chart shows the budget by function, and the board was legally required to adopt the budget at the function level. And this is just presented to show you what the operating expenditures are. So, this excludes TIP and recapture. So, you can see when you exclude those, and this is just the budget that we operate on a daily basis, on 63.5% of that is in instruction. There's a picture showing the big purple piece is instruction. Now, this chart includes TIP and recapture. So, there's the recapture of the 49.2 million, and then TIP is included in our governmental number. But when you include TIP and recapture, that decreases the percentages for the other functions. But do want to point out that the recapture is 25.95% of the total budget. So, here is a picture that just kind of shows you, instructions are largest, and then the next largest is the recapture piece of the budget. This revenue budget basically wants to illustrate here is that 90% of our budget is, our revenue sources come from local sources, with the largest being taxes. So, we still rely heavily on those taxes. And that's just showing the picture of that. And this is the general overview of the budget with the revenues and expenditures compared to the final amended budget that will be approved here in a little bit. You also must approve the child nutrition fund. And here is an overview of that budget, not many changes from last year. It is a balanced budget, revenues equal in expenditures. The debt service budget, it's based on a debt service tax rate of 35.67 cents. In May of 2016, we had our voters approve a bond program, and we, to date, we've sold 188.655 of those bonds. We will probably be selling the remaining amount during this fiscal year. The 2019 tax rate will remain the same as 2018, so it will remain at 35.67 cents. Included in this budget is a payment that we received from the City of Grapevine Gaylord, TIP, and that's 1.5 million. Included in this budget is $15 million to have a bond prepayment for Series 2011, which upon that prepayment will estimate to save 10.1 in future interest cost. And this budget is built with a small surplus of 400,000, and that is rolled into the fund balance to make the August 2020 bond payment. Here's the numbers of what that looks like. So, revenue is a 59.7 million, expenditure is a 59.3 million, and you do see that principal prepayment right there of 15 million. We did 10 million this year. The official budget document will be posted on the GCISD website tomorrow, as well as this presentation tonight. We'll have that on the website as well. Any questions?
Any questions in the hearing? I don't think there are questions. No one signed, that was in my book. No one signed up for questions in the hearing? To be heard, so that our, thank you, Deanne. So, that closes our public hearing. So, we'll move on to the reports. Thank you, Jesse. We move on to the report to the superintendent. Item A, Act on the 2018-19 Final Amended Budget.
Yes, these first four items are directly related to either this current year's budget or the proposed next year's budget. Item A is the final amended budget for 1819. I'll turn it over to Deanne to talk us through this item.
Okay, so, every year in June, we must approve the final amended budget that gets filed with TEA on our annual financial report. And usually, this report includes adjustments for the final projected revenues, and looking at local state revenues and recapture expenditures, that of course, those are the three pieces of our funding. We have adjusted the budget to ref... We have adjusted the budget to reflect those projections based on final projected student attendance and tax collections. The TIF revenue and expenditures have been adjusted for the final TIF values. And then we have various transfers between the functions to ensure that we don't over, when we file our audit report, that our actual expenditures don't exceed at the function level. And so sometimes there's a need, you know, we're building a budget in the spring of the year in, before it actually happens, and sometimes there's the need to make adjustments. And so that's typically done on this final amended budget as well. If you look at the general operating, we had a previous deficit of six point five million, and on the proposed final amended budget, it's six million. And really, I don't adjust any of the expenditures because I'll leave them, just, I move the function where the budget needs to go, rather than reducing any of the expenditures, even though we know we have a favorable variance on that side. And then on the child nutrition budget, we made amendment on the budget to reflect the use of fund balance for the purchase of kitchen equipment. And on the debt service side, we made some amendments to the revenue for interest revenue and some debt service fees, as well as we included in the budget to prepay nine million dollars of bonds, but we had the cash to prepay ten point one, two million, ten point two million, that's right. And so I amended the budget to reflect that payment as well. And so tonight, we're just asking you to approve the final amended budget as presented in these reports.
Thank you, Diane. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen final amended budgets for the general fund, child nutrition fund, and debt service fund is presented in the final budget amendment reports.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation, I have a motion. Jesse?
Yes, and I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
In a second, please.
I'll second.
Mindy, thank you very much. Any discussion? None, seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Move on to item B, Act on Adoption of the Twenty Nineteen Twenty Twenty Accelerated Instruction Budget.
Yes, these next three items, by rule, must be approved in this particular order each year. Getting to it. All right, so the first one is the accelerated instruction budget or the budget for instruction for students that need some accelerated instruction. The state requires that the district adopt the accelerated instruction budget. Prior to adopting the official budget, these funds will be used to support accelerated instruction during the nineteen twenty school year and the summer of twenty twenty. The recommendation is for the board trustees to adopt the two thousand nineteen twenty accelerated instruction budget in the amount of ninety-four thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you. In a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions? There we go. We knew you had a lot of questions we gave you, too.
I do have one. Dr. Ryan, would this possibly be an area to look at with House Bill three and the expansion of elementary, an additional thirty days, that maybe some of this would qualify to fall under that?
Can you ask your question again? I need to-
Yeah, so House Bill three allows for the extended school year.
Right.
An addition, up to, up to, an additional thirty days. And can we at least run this by TEA to see if some of our accelerated instruction, especially that summer program, might qualify for any of that funding?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, and we certainly can ask them, as this House Bill three guidance continues to roll out, for them to clarify that. My guess is it would need to be a continuation of the school year, like instead of us getting out of school on, let's say, May the thirtieth, you get out of school on June the fifteenth, and that, and that, you know, that's probably the intent of what they're talking about, but this might, might fall under that as well. I think it's, I think it's great-
Or if there's a way to structure, since we usually know-
Right.
You know, how many, roughly how many kids, grade level, et cetera.
We can certainly, we can certainly explore that option, for sure.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Move on to item C, Act on the Twenty Nineteen Twenty Twenty Compensation Plan for All District Employees.
So this is a really important portion of the meeting tonight as well. It's a compensation plan for every employee in the school district, and I'll ask, because it is a little bit different this year, I'll ask Diane and Gemma if you would, just to kind of talk us through the compensation plan in general terms, please.
Thank you.
And that's a very important statement to make again. House Bill three, their requirement is for us to give a raise of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-six, correct?
Yes.
And a commitment from the board is giving a compensation increase of three point four million.
Three and a half times.
Right. So that, I, I know we give the percentages. I like saying the figure, because it really needs to be how much we appreciate who we have out there and who's in our district, so.
Well, and I also think it's important that, that this is the first time that the legislature tackled, and I really do mean, in the past, it's always been a matter of kicking the can down the, down the road, and I really do applaud the legislature for, for taking a stand in, in terms of trying to, to, you know, it would be ideal if it was perfect, but we-
We're going to get six hundred and sixty-two dollars.
There you go.
We're giving them two thousand.
Right.
Commitment by the board. And then teacher, nurse, librarian, counselors, the six-plus years, we're only going to get six hundred and seventy-five dollars under House Bill three, and we're at twenty-five hundred. And we're increasing, starting teacher salary from fifty-two thousand two hundred to fifty-three thousand five hundred, and then all other employees from a state level would only get a half a percent of midpoint, and we're doing two percent.
Two percent.
Based on their midpoint of the category that they're in. See, I was listening when I leaned over and asked that question.
Lot of numbers, oh, right.
It is.
Yeah.
And that's where, like you said, we've been working on, I mean, I know we haven't had a lot of discussion on this right now, but you've been presenting this to us, your team, since January. We've had multiple workshops on this, open workshops, that the public can come to, so thank you.
Yeah, that's the key, open. Open, open.
Open, open.
Remember, it's a commercial.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, guys. Move on to item D, the Act Now on the Adoption of the Twenty Nineteen Twenty Twenty Budget. Dr. Ryan?
Now that we've done item B and C, now it goes to D, which is the actual budget. We did have a workshop talking about this, but I do think it's important for us to delineate the highlights of this next year's budget. And to do so, I'd like to ask Diane to take us through that just briefly, please.
Okay. And I do want to point out, we do have replacement pages for twenty-four through twenty-six. The state requires that we approve a budget prior to June thirtieth, because our fiscal year end is June thirtieth. And the board is also required to adopt three budgets legally, and that's general fund, child nutrition fund, and debt service fund. And so that is at the function level. So that's what we have presented tonight for adoption. And the proposed general operating budget includes revenues and other resources of one hundred and eighty-two million nine hundred and ninety thousand eight twenty-five, expenditures of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and fourteen thousand two fifty-four, with a net operating result of negative six point six million. The proposed debt service budget includes revenues of fifty-nine million six hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-one, and expenditure, and revenues, I'm sorry, and expenditures of fifty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and nine. This is a slight increase to net operating results of four hundred and sixteen thousand. And then the proposed child nutrition budget includes revenues and expenditures of five million five hundred and eight thousand four hundred and forty-five.
Thank you, Diane. The recommendation is for the board trustees to adopt the two thousand nineteen twenty general operating budget as presented in the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine million six hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. The two thousand nineteen twenty debt service budget as presented in the amount of fifty-nine million two hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and the two thousand nineteen twenty child nutrition budget as presented in the amount of five million five hundred and eight thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you. In a second. Mindy, thank you very much. Any discussion?
I'd like to point, point out or clarify one thing on Diane's presentation earlier, that fourteen million reduction in Robin Hood payment was from next year's projected Robin Hood payment, not a fourteen million reduction from this past year's-
This past year, yes. Absolutely. That's a great point.
Very different numbers.
Yes. Great point.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions or clarifications? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero.
And on behalf of our staff, I would just like to say thank you to the board trustees for stepping out there early and stepping out there strong, with a strong statement that our employees are valued and we care about them, we want to keep them, and we really appreciate their work that they do with their children every single day. And so thank you very much to our board for, for that strong statement this evening, and really throughout the whole spring. We've really worked hard, and Diane and her team, you pointed it out, really, for several months have, has really worked hard, and then, of course, happens pretty much every time like this, where it's just right, you know, right, right up to the very end, we're, we're working diligently to try to get to the board the best possible look at our budget that we can. So I just want to say thank you very much on behalf of our employees for what you do to lead, for your vision, and, and really, next year starts about sixty seconds ago.
Yeah.
And, and so we really appreciate what you've done with tonight's budget.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Move on to item E, Act on Change Order Number Zero Zero One with Lee Lewis Construction to Repair the Parking Lot at Grapevine High School as Part of Bid Package A.
So in March, the board approved funding for this project, and so we went to work with Lee Lewis and with Huckabee to, to work on the design of the project, and so we're at, at the point where we're ready to move forward. We're at the recommendation to try to move quickly, or as quickly as possible, try to get that particular issue repaired at Grapevine High School. The recommendation is for the board trustees to approve change order number one in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand thirty-nine dollars to Lee Lewis Construction Incorporated to add repair of the South Grapevine High School parking lot as part of Big Package A construction project.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a motion for the recommendation.
I move we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Doug. In a second. Becky, thank you very much. Any discussion? Jesse?
Yeah, somewhere, and I was trying to find it. What's the timeline for the repairs to take place?
Chris, you want to help us out? There were Chris and Gary.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan and trustees. The timeline, they're going to attempt to finish it before school starts is the, is the hope. Pending, we don't have further rain like we've had this past week.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's kind of why I was asking the question, is that right now, just roughly, when you say get it done before school starts, what, what are we looking at? Just out of curiosity.
August nineteenth.
I understand. But I'm, I'm serious about this.
I don't understand the question.
Because I'm going somewhere. I mean, are we talking about, are we looking right now to the end of July, or are we looking middle of August? Just a, I'm just curious.
I, I can't really pinpoint it that precisely.
All right.
Let me ask you a different way. How many days of scope of work have they allotted for this?
Do you remember? I, I don't, they just, they haven't given us a specific date.
And, and I'll tell you where, and I'll tell you where I'm going with this. Heaven forbid we get days of rain and delays and all of that. My concern is that this past year, we had a section roped off that couldn't be used because of the issue. If I read this correctly, we're also going to dig a little further now-
Correct.
And correct that. So that's why I'm asking the question, that in the event that it gets delayed, oh, is it, I mean, the fact that we now have a bigger space roped off that won't be able to be used, is that going to be an issue? And have we thought of a secondary plan in the event that that happens?
In the-
I'm just trying to look at it from a proactive standpoint.
In the event that occurs, then it would be similar to when the MAC was being constructed, and some of the parking might take place at Cross Timbers on that back lot. It's not expected to take place, so it shouldn't be an issue unless weather continues.
Okay, all right.
And, and I will say typically, at the beginning of the school year, we don't have a lot of sophomores that drive. And so about every month, there's typically around between forty and fifty students that turn sixteen a month, as I recall from my days, a long time ago as a high school principal. So, so really, there's a, there's a fewer, there's a little, I guess, less pressure on the parking lot at the very beginning of the year, and then, you know, if we were talking about February or March, it'd be, be a different story.
Yeah, okay. All right, I, like I said, I just noticed that the scope of work was bigger, and I was just concerned, I mean-
So we can find out about the days in a few days.
Well, I, I really just wanted it in that, to be, for that reason of asking that question in general. I'm not trying to get a specific date from you, other than I was just trying to get a kind of a picture, given the fact that if for whatever reason we get a lot of rain between now and then, and it gets delayed, the fact that we now have a bigger impact area, was that going to be an issue?
And we have a backup plan for parking, and then also, there's a lot of spaces that aren't necessarily utilized closer to the Ag Barn also.
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to say. My, I mean, Mr. Denning can chime in here, too, but my experience of driving over there twice a day, every day all last school year, it was not the end of the world. Where you could really notice the impact is when there were events going on, and it would have been nice to have those spots, because they were more conveniently located to the gyms and the sack, but the kids weren't really running out of parking spaces.
Now, it was workable.
Okay, just a question I was asking.
During, during construction, are all the, all the roadways through the parking lot, are those, those are just going to remain open, aren't they?
The main roadways, yes.
Okay.
All right, Chris, I got a question, and I want to go a little off topic, because I'm looking at the schematics and the drawings here, what you're protecting, and I see landscaping out here. Generally speaking, what type of warranty do we have on our landscape, since we've built the MAC, the PAC, put in this parking lot, and we've gone through, and we see some of the landscaping not surviving and not taking and so forth? What's our warranty on our landscaping and so forth and that type?
The landscaping for the MAC does have the standard one-year warranty, and so they are going back and replacing some of the plants that have, have not survived.
And is that typical of most, most of the projects that we do, where, where these parking lots, we're putting in an island with a tree, or, or some type of shrubbery, or something that it typically has a one year?
Yes. Now, that particular island that sank, that's, that's part of, that's part of this fee.
I understand that.
Change of-
I'm just kind of looking, as I drive around and look. Just wanted to know. I've been intending to ask that question for a while, but never thought about until I really saw the schematics and some things.
They've replaced some of them, as Gary will mention here in a little bit in the update, but there are some that they still, we're still going back and saying, oh, you missed a few, so.
Fantastic. Thanks, Chris.
Any other questions? CNN, all those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Move on to item F, Act on Donation, Cross Timbers.
Yes, we have donation. One donation this evening from Cross Timbers Middle School PTA. They're donating graphics to be installed in various areas within the campus. They include window and wall wraps for the front entrance and the sack area to enhance the school building with the campus logo. Total value of the graphics is twenty-six thousand, just over twenty-six thousand dollars. So the recommendations for the board trustees to accept the donation of graphics to be installed in various areas within the campus valued at twenty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars from Cross Timbers Middle School PTA.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I move that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you. In a second. Doug, thank you so much. And any discussion?
Thank you to the PTA. That's a lot of fundraising.
Yep, that is a lot of fundraising. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero.
I would say this particular graphic, as we've seen it across the district, it really does enhance the culture of the campus. And so that is a lot of money, and that's also a lot of graphics that are very, very positive.
I have a question regarding that. We're having the PTA donate these graphics, these vinyl graphics that are going on the doors and going in the glasses in between and parts of the building. But I've also seen the PTA in some of this, in some of the previous ones that have donated, have paid for some of the bannering, like fence bannering at the middle school to go on the stadium, you know, like the middle school football stadium. So my question was, I was driving by CMS the other day, and I saw that banner. Are we taking any of that down during the summer when we're not having sports there to get more time and length to protect that product? Because those are just banners that may be twenty-foot long, about eighteen to twenty-four inches, that says CMS Stadium or CTMS Stadium that's sitting out there just from a protection standpoint to, from a value.
I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of that, no.
Actually, I believe I purchased those, the CMS ones, were by the Booster Club. So the Booster Club could certainly take it down and store it.
Yeah. And I'm just curious, because I'm just trying to protect our investment that's out there from the, or from vandalism as well. Because those are just tied, they're tied on, those cords could be cut and taken out. Anyways. Did I hear you volunteer for that?
Can they storm in your garage?
Yeah.
Move on to item G, Act on I University Prep Course Approval.
Yes, as the board knows, we've been working on writing our own curriculum to be able to take advantage of that opportunity as far as the revenue goes, whenever we do have that revenue or do have the curriculum written. And that would negate the expenditure that we have to provide now for our current curriculum. So I University Prep has written comprehensive courses for the nineteen-twenty school year, and they're a hundred percent tax-aligned and INA COL compliant. And I see Kay back here, and Dr. Rogers could probably explain some of that if we needed to. Courses have been written, embedded into Canvas, embedded through the Internal Course Review Team, and we're asking for the board to consider this approval as we can move forward with the courses that they've created. And you can see a list of those on page forty-three. Now, the recommendations for the board trustees to approve the course listed in the attachment is GCIST approved online courses.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you very much. Discussion?
I have a question. Canvas, I'm not sure, I'm unfamiliar with that term. It's embedded, the courses are embedded into Canvas? Is it the online learning curriculum?
So Kay, can you come to the podium, Kay, and talk a little bit about Canvas?
So yes, all the courses that we have written are INA COL 508 and a hundred percent teaks aligned. All of those courses are embedded into Canvas, which is a learning management system that we have in GCIST, so that it is a comprehensive package for a student when they log in to go through their course.
Is it unique to I University Prep?
It is. We have it for the whole district.
The whole district, okay.
Yes.
A lot of districts use it as their management system. Canvas is used across the state.
Okay.
That allows for students to have a single sign-on in terms of user ID, password, and gives them access to the content.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any other questions or discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Move on to item H, we have replacement pages for item H.
Yes, we do. For some reason, the page didn't publish with the rest of the packet, but there is a replacement page that is labeled Act on Endorsement of Candidate for TASB Board of Directors, Region Eleven. I'll wait until you find that. GCIST received notice from TASB that the term of Bobby Rigas, TASB Board Director, Region Eleven, Position A, will expire this year at the close of the 2019 convention. Mr. Rigas has indicated he will not seek reelection, and the nominations committee will meet in Austin on September sixth and seventh to interview nominated individuals and prepare a slate of nominees to present to the delegate assembly. And then we do have one trustee who is asked to be recommended for that position. The recommendation is for the board trustees to support. Becky St. John is the nominee for the TASB Board of Directors.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make the motion that we approve Dr. Ryan's recommendation and support Becky.
Thank you, Mindy. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Doug, thank you. And this does have to be approved by the board? And Becky, do you want to do anything to say?
Yeah. So the way the TASB Board of Directors is made up, and this is actually who runs TASB, very similar to a school district. It's not admin, it's the board. And so there are a certain number of school districts, because of their size, that get automatic positions, automatic directors. So Dallas, Houston, Austin, they, Cy Fair, they have automatic positions. And then the rest of the board, there's about forty-five or so directors, are divided up among the Education Service Center regions, and the number of directors is based on the population. And so for Region Eleven, Position A had been held by Bobby Rigas out there in Alito, and Bobby did not run for reelection this year. He stepped off his board after many years of amazing service out there in Alito, as well as to the TASB board. And so this position is now an open seat, and so we'll see, it's open to anyone from Region Eleven. So we'll see who else goes into it. There is a way to go ahead and win the seat outright without having to go to the delegate assembly, which is to gather enough endorsements from other school districts, and I'll be working on that over the course of the next month or so and see what happens there. But as y'all know, I've served for, well, I mean, all of us have attended either the grassroots meetings or the North Texas Area Association meetings, plus SLI, plus convention. And so, you know, we all have the ability to participate in the decision-making of the School Board Association. And then as part of the grassroots process with the advocacy agenda development, I've served the four terms on the Legislative Advisory Committee, which has been very interesting as part of the lack, the four members from around the state that serve on that committee. We're required to attend all of the TASB board meetings, the quarterly board meetings anyway. And so I've been attending those board meetings now for the last couple of years as well. And so I've really gotten a good feel for, oh, just the different committees that make up, that make up TASB, how the different trustees serve on those committees, and how they represent their school district, their region, and then, of course, the state association in general. So I appreciate the nomination. We'll see how the vote goes here in just a second.
I'm still thinking.
I'm a little undersired there, yeah.
We got this information a little late.
Yeah, I know. I'm like, what's up here? But that's it in a nutshell. And so if I'm fortunate enough to serve Region Eleven, there's, you know, seventy-seven school districts in Region Eleven, and it would be an honor and a pleasure to represent GCIST as part of the TASB board. So we'll see what happens as we go from here.
So after, tonight, if it passes, you go to Austin for an interview and then on to that, okay? All this needs to be presented and mailed in by July first?
Yes.
So make sure you take it with you.
Yes.
So.
Can we hold, can we ask questions in order of interview?
Y'all don't get to do the interview. The nominations committee does the interview. There's a reason for that.
I would say that having served on this board now for quite a while, I think that Becky would be a very good, strong individual to serve in this capacity. As she mentioned, she could get it outright if all of the boards in the, in Region Eleven will take action and support her nomination. However, in the event that she doesn't receive the percentage that's needed, then she'll go to the TASB Delegate Assembly, at which point she will then address the board if anyone else wants to either, any other district wants to submit a candidate that she would be up against, or they can even nominate someone off the floor on that day. So I think that by us taking this action and then letting other districts know right away that we've got someone that we'd like to have fill Bobby's position would be a very good plus. So I totally can appreciate Becky's wanting to do this, but I think more important, it's a job that's a great fit for her, and she'll represent not only our school district but also Region Eleven and do a great job. So thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. So we know how one person voted.
Yeah.
I haven't voted yet.
So all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. You cannot beat the delegates. That is, that is it for, that is the end of our action items. The rest for information only. Move on to item I, review of the preliminary state assessment results.
Yes, we have received preliminary STAR results, and Mr. Tovar will take us through the annual report.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan and trustees. It's always a pleasure to be here to give you, like Dr. Ryan says, these are the preliminary results from our state assessment. And so as you are looking at these numbers and you're thinking about how hard the children and the teachers worked, also know that this also represents a great deal of leadership and hard work by our campus administration and the campus testing coordinators who coordinated probably what's going to be over twenty thousand or so individual assessments that our students do take during this time period. That does include PSAT or AP or anything like that. So what we have first, this kind of shows you again what we do in April and May in regards to when those assessments fall and what grade levels are assessed, as well as when we get those results back. So you can see we got a few of these results back just about a week ago. Also, what we have going on right now is we're getting ready for the SSI, Third Administration for Students Who are in Fifth and Eighth Grade, who have not been successful previously on either the math reading or both portions of the STAR exam, and that assessment will be coming up here fairly soon. Those students are receiving that accelerated instruction to help them get ready for the sixth or the ninth grade, and we'll have those results typically in the middle of July. And summer school, those results, as well as the summer EOC results, we typically share those in the fall when we talk about the overall summer school program. So remember, I'm going to show you some numbers. These are preliminary. This is not our accountability subset, okay? And so we'll get actual accountability ratings in August. This August will be the first time that our campuses will receive a letter grade of A, B, C. And then, you know, there's a couple other options, but hopefully we won't have any of those. But yes, those will be the first time we get the A through F letter grades. You can still earn distinction designations. What you're going to see again is that that scale score has not increased since it increased a few years ago, but we mark it on there so you can see when that occurred. And then also that those performance level definitions changed two summers ago as well, where now we talk about approaches, meets, and masters, as opposed to level two satisfactory or the final level two post-secondary ready. Those kinds of things have gone away. These results are going to include second administrations where available. And so, for example, first state accountability, fifth grade and eighth grade STAR results for reading and math, they include that second administration that happens in May. Because, you know, usually, you know, if I'm ready in April and I pass it, that's fantastic, but let's give me that next month of instruction to make sure I'm ready for that second attempt. And so that second attempt does, is included in state accountability. Also, because we do have a lot of students who test off-grade level, this is the grade level content assessed, not the grade level enrollment. So if I am in, let's say, the sixth grade, and I'm picking the Algebra I EOC, I'm not included in the sixth grade numbers, I'm included in Algebra I. So the first one here, this is our percent on the end of course that are scoring approaches or higher over time since about 2013. You can see there, there's Algebra, Biology, English I, II, and US History. Those are the ones that are required for high school graduation. For eighteen and nineteen, you can see that we kind of mark where that PSAT exemption is allowed for English I as well as Algebra. The Algebra, we usually only have a little over a hundred students who use that PSAT exemption, because what ends up happening is, a lot of our advanced math students are going to take Algebra I in the eighth grade. So by the time they take the PSAT, they've already passed, attempted and passed the Algebra I end of course, so it's not used as widely, and it doesn't really change our overall percent approaches, and so I don't change it there. On the screen, though, you will see that what the impact of our PSAT exemptions are here in GCIST. So, well, it says four hundred and forty-four. There it says fifty-nine percent. So English I, a couple of years ago, we would have had about twelve hundred students taking the English I end of course. And so we were having around eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-one, that was our percent passing. And so last year was the first year that we used that PSAT exemption, and then we also used it again this year. And you can see that when we add back in the eight hundred and twelve students who were able to use that PSAT exemption this year, that our approaches grade level for English I will be more like eighty-six percent when we add those students back in. So that's higher than last year, and it's higher than it used to be back in the old way when the students did take the English I EOC. So we did have some conversation last year when we looked at this, and we talked about how districts were asking the commissioner to consider adding it back in, having us at a approaches meets and then possibly a master's grade level designation based on the PSAT. And so what's happened, though, during that same amount of time where those were in conversation, and this conversation had started turning towards, well, okay, let's have one for approaches, let's have one for meets, let's have one for masters. And in the meantime, the US Department of Education has come back and said that we need to stop, Texas needs to stop, not this year for 2019, but starting in 2020, stop using substitute assessment scores for accountability. So students still could use an assessment substitute score for graduation, but wouldn't be able to use it in accountability calculations. So that's a very recent development. So what does that look like? We're still just kind of soaking in new information that came to us in the past week, but there will be some conversations to have moving forward about what does that look like for us. So this is our end of course, what it looks like when you look at scoring meets or higher. And you can see that Algebra I, Biology I, English II, US History, they're all a very general positive trend in terms of scoring that meets or higher. When we talk about state accountability, you'll hear people talking about ninety, sixty, thirty. And what they're alluding to is that if you have about ninety percent approaching, sixty percent or so hitting meets, and thirty percent or so hitting masters grade level, then that averages to a sixty, and a sixty is a A. So that's why you kind of hear those little benchmark scores. But on this particular slide here, I want to show you what's interesting about our English I, is that on the other slide, when we said approaches, so of the four hundred and forty-four students who took the English I test, and you say about, well, more than half of them passed, but then when I add in, when I go and look at meets, you can see that nearly everyone who actually attended the English I also hit at the meets level. So the students who are passing are passing at grade level. And we just need to have, we have more students, though, who are in that group across the district, but we'd like to see more of them passing. When we do add in our PSAT exemptions, we're higher again on the meets category than last year. So last year with PSAT exemptions, we were seventy-eight percent meets grade level. This year, we're at eighty-one percent when we add in those PSAT exemption students. This one right here shows us scoring masters grade level. When we did this last year, I kind of added in what it would look like if they were to come come up with a benchmark score in the PSAT for masters grade level for English One. We now know that that's not going to happen at this, in the near future. We've been told that's not going to happen and so I didn't do it for this year. But you can see again upward trends, Algebra One, Biology One, English Two, US History, where again you're seeing some strong performance really in that masters grade level category. For English One, we are about where the state is in terms of percent mastering grade level. Although when I talk to our high schools, when we look back at their comparability groups and they say, well, I used to have nineteen percent, now I'm at ten percent. That's true, there is an opportunity for some growth there, but in terms of comparing them to the comparability groups, that's not where they were earning distinctions in English One or in terms of their distinctions for reading, English Language Arts. It was really more on AP and SAT participation and performance. And so when we look at that particular number, it's lower than maybe where you would want it to be. However, we see strong participation also too with our dual. And so that's maybe where we, where the focus is so that even though that's when they're freshmen, when we see them as sophomores, juniors, and seniors, you see much growth. So let's talk next about the area where it's been, has been a strength for our district for a long period of time as well, is those SSI grade levels again. So this right here is percent of students who are approaching grade level. This is fifth grade on the, the one side, eighth grade on the other. And you can see with the first and the second administration combined, we hit about ninety-four to ninety-five percent of those students who are, who are hitting that approaches mark on the first attempt. You'll see way back there in about twenty, I guess sixteen, where it's brown, it says scale score increased by twelve. That's that first time that they decided we were going to start inching towards what they were calling final level two satisfactory. Remember, there's no more inching, we're staying with the one scale score as far as approaches. Then they have the next marker for meets and then for masters grade level. You can see here that we do trend well above the state and the region in regards to performance on approaches grade level for our two SSI grade levels. Again, here is meets grade level or higher. And you can see the positive trend in terms of students who are meeting that higher standard or meets grade level on fifth and eighth. And then again, here is, this is masters grade level, again, reading, fifth and eighth grade, those first and second administrations combined. And you can see that those are higher than they've been since I've kind of been keeping track myself in twenty thirteen. This is comparable information for math SSI, so that's that third, I mean, that fifth grade and the eighth grade. And you can see that we stay consistently up there in the ninety-five percent after the first and second administration for fifth. Again, this year, ninety-five percent on our eighth grade. You can see that a few years ago, that's where we had the new math teaks. And so whenever, I like to label that one because you see that dip and you say, well, what happened? That's the year it all changed. And then the next year is the year that they did the scale score increasing. And then after that, the scales, scale score was stabilized throughout. Similar data here for meets grade level. It's interesting that they both came out at seventy-four percent, but that's your fifth and eighth grade again. Again, you can see fifth and eighth grade getting stronger and stronger as time goes on. That's not just a fifth grade thing that has to build from the lower grades. Same thing with eighth grade, they don't just show up in eighth grade right there. It builds over time during that meets grade level or higher. And then this right here, this is fifth and eighth grade, students who are mastering grade level.
Why, why that, that huge spike? I mean, in fifth grade?
Yeah.
I mean, that one, it was a thirty-nine and then now it jumps up to fifty-five and yet for eighth grade, it's, you know, within relatively range. So what's, what's the, the thinking or the?
It's something we're still having to look at. We don't, we don't have a reason for why that happens just yet. We've only had it about a week or so. And so in terms of that deep level analysis as far as what, was there something in particular about this fifth grade group that was stronger, something different about the test, something new? Those are all still kind of in that conjecture phase where we're not sure yet, but we certainly want to know because we want to sustain or maintain or spread that across the system.
Correct.
But congratulations to fifth grade. I know. Watch out for that group, right? So these are elementary STAR results. Orange is approaches, red is meets, blue is masters. And you can see kind of how it shakes out again in terms of the percentage of students who are taking those tests as far as that meets and masters and approaches. You may have heard in the past week too, it's another area where we know it's changing. We don't know to what and we don't know when. But we do know that writing is going to be changing at that grade four and seven. And so some of the things we are hearing is it would be added into other places, but we don't know exactly what that's going to look like just yet. But as TEA makes those decisions, we'll be letting everyone know so they can kind of start planning and making those adjustments for changes that might be coming. And one thing we've heard is potentially that that would be added into, changes to, let's say, the reading test itself. We've also heard as well that they would want no more than seventy-five percent at any STAR test to be multiple choice. So those grittables that you see, free response, all those different types of performance assessment, different kind of ways for students to respond. And so in terms of the writing results, we're looking at the writing results already at the district level and it'll start to work its way to the campus level as far as things that were strengths and weaknesses from this year. But at the same time, we do know that it will be, it will be changing and possibly expanding across grade levels. Again, here you are, this is your middle school STAR results. Again, orange is of the students, let's say, who took the sixth grade reading test, eighty percent. And where approaches, fifty-four percent masters, thirty-one percent, I mean, fifty-four percent meets, thirty-one percent masters, all the way across. I do want to point out again, each year when we do try to talk about math seven and just remind ourselves that in terms of math seven, that what you see there is if I'm a student and I'm in sixth grade accelerated math, I'm going to take the sixth grade math STAR because I've had all of sixth grade and some of seven, but I haven't been exposed to all the seventh grade curriculum. So then if I'm in seventh grade accelerated math, I take all the seventh grade teaks for the remainder of the seventh grade teaks that we didn't do in sixth, plus I do eighth grade teaks. And so those students take the math eight exam. So math seven is sometimes our people who don't feel as confident in terms of taking their mathematics and haven't been as exposed to grade level curriculum, or curriculum that's beyond grade level. And so we do tend to see that one a little bit lower through the years than some of our other math groups. And it has to do with which tests students take in our accelerated pathways.
And that would account for that, and you think that, that accounts for that drastic drop there? I mean, if, if you, you look at masters at that eleven and then your meets is at thirty-six, but when you compare it to across the board, it just again seems to stand out or jump out. So based on the, on your statements, that's what you attribute that to then?
That is predominantly the thing. That in the other categories, what we also see is we see students who are accelerated beyond grade level or your students who we know that are already more advanced in mathematics. And so then we start taking out students who maybe would have been taking math seven and instead they're taking the math eight test or algebra or, you know, well, we don't have a geometry test, but you get the idea that it does change that group of students to not look so much like when we look at our district in terms of all students. It's kind of, it's a, a group of students who maybe are more reluctant math learners.
And we've seen that as a pattern over the last couple of years?
Yes.
Could, could we get, because some of that data, because it is a little concerning, especially since that meets grade level is actually supposed to kind of be the passing, even though they've, even though they named approaches, which is technically the passing score. But I know the commissioner has kind of deemed meets as the marker for being ready to move on to the next level. And thirty-six percent of those kids that may possibly. Just one or, or eighth grade maybe?
Or eighth grade then.
So what I'll do is I'll be sure to get you all that, some information that has that context layer around it so you can kind of see is this a, an us problem, is this an everyone problem, or is there somebody who's got a little bit differently? As well as work, make sure Jennifer Heileman has all the information. She needs to work with her campus principals and executive director to say, okay, you know, what are some reasonable goals and what are some things that are working versus not working for us?
Thank you.
Certainly. So these are elementary approaches grade level over time. And you can see the, the scores as we go across through the years. These are approaches grade levels. So these are all the elementary ones that are not in our, that are not in the SSI, so it's not fifth or eighth. So you have reading four and three, and math four and three, and then writing four and science five. Just in terms of what does that look like across the state? So for example, like math grade four, you can see that we did have a decrease. So I went to see, well, what does it look like at the region and the state? And what I saw was that the region and the state also had a decrease as well, sort of a little bit comparable to ours between eighteen and nineteen. And so that would be something, I think, that in terms of sharing that with Jennifer Heileman, our director of mathematics, to kind of say, hey, here's some, here's what I saw in our data, but also as well at the state and region level so they could see amongst their, amongst her groups, what people are saying about this particular year and may, maybe why you saw a decrease there. These are in middle school approaches grade level as well. And so again, I took out eighth grade math and reading because we've already talked about those extensively through the SSI slides. Main thing, reason we focused on those, of course, is those are the years where the students have the multiple attempts and additional layers to being able to go on to the next grade level if they're not successful after that third attempt. And so these are the scores for six, six and seven reading and math over time, as well as writing, and then science eight and social studies eight. Across the board, when I look at some of our data versus some of the state and regional data, it's kind of, there's nothing where there's like a solid, everyone's on the trend up. There are places where everyone's a little bit up and down with no particular, not like a particular pattern.
At this point, are we able to drill down into our sub-hops as well too?
We are at the point where we have that data like that as well. It's not cleaned up yet for accountability subset. The common ribbon that seems to run through all of our data, not just STAR data as well as AP and so forth, has always been economically disadvantaged in how it branches out into some of our other demographic groups. And so that's one of the ways that we're taking a look at data down to the teacher level and we've already started working on some elementary information, yes. And so this is the STAR reading for reading. It's the student growth measure over time and you can see the amount of students that were hit that expected or accelerated or limited growth. And so this is for twenty nineteen in particular. I remember last year and this year is where they added in looking at how they're doing the points a little bit differently because we have a new accountability system. And so it has to do, there's places where a student could be in the same performance level. I could go, let's say, did not meet grade level to did not meet grade level, right? Between the two years, that have increased enough in scale score points to actually show what they might call expected or accelerated growth. And so that's how they kind of look at both moving between performance levels as well as vertical scale score changes on the reading and the math tests through time to figure out if the student is, how the student is growing in both reading and they do it for math as well. And so these are how ours look. This is where it's going to show up, let's say, on domain two. We start looking at our domain two results in August for state accountability. One part of domain two, they give you the idea of relative performance. That's usually where we see our high schools be more successful because we look at STAR performance plus college career military ready against other schools that are comparatively economically disadvantaged, typically for our elementary schools though. You see this right here as being the one that they go with for them because it tends to score higher where we see student growth over time. And so they'll actually use all those points. They'll tally up a number of tests that could have earned full points and they come up with a percentage that runs through a scale score process to determine that letter grade.
And then so under EL, ELA two?
Mm-hmm.
Thirteen percent limited, twenty percent expected, and then one percent accelerated?
Yes. So remember, all of our students who took, used the PSAT exemption are not included. So you have about, you have whatever, let's see, thirteen plus twenty, those added up together are obviously not a hundred. That remaining part is no information and those are students who did not, who took their PSAT exemption and did not take the English One exam. And so that's why you have students with, you show percentages where you don't have students who don't have a score. And so yes, one percent accelerated and about twenty percent of all the students there hit that expected mark. Because I'll have students who take English Two who didn't take English One.
What about the other?
No, go ahead.
I don't, okay. Like grade four, those, those only added up to ninety-two. Where are the other eight percent?
They'll begin, will be somebody who had no information.
Okay.
Or whatever, for a variety of reasons. They didn't take the test, and they took a different form of the test, maybe they moved from the Spanish to an English version, those kinds of things.
But, I don't know. I mean, and I hear what you're saying, but I, I mean, I still, you look at ELA two and you're, you're telling me that, that even though those other students don't count, that what, the ones that are indeed counted, we only had one percent accelerated on them?
Yes.
Because everybody else is taking the PSAT and getting credit for it through the PSAT.
So of a thousand, like a thousand ELA two tests, let's say, for example.
Right.
Eight hundred of those will have no information because they did not take the English One. Because it has to be the consecutive years. And so yes.
So then of the remaining two hundred, then we get one percent?
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, I mean, and I understand what the example, but that's two kids?
Yes. I would like to point out.
Shannon, I'm, I'm sorry, but something's not computing. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying and I, and I, and I hear your explanation, but that's, I don't know, it just doesn't feel right. Am I missing something?
No, I think you were just maybe hoping for a number that looked more like the other numbers.
Well, yeah, but more important, I mean, if, if that indeed is not the case.
About who has English Two and those kind of campus level. Also be interesting as well because we help. Category and about the same there and that kind of that expected. So yes, sharing that with those campus principals so they're at least aware, as well as Jackie Van Horn in humanities, to make sure she has that kind of data that she needs to dig in a little bit deeper and find out a little more about what happened. Pulling his teacher level data as well so they can see what that looks like by teacher in terms of growth as well as number of students who had to take the test versus PSAT exemptions and all those different kinds of ways we want to look at it to see if we can figure out what is it about our data, what is it about the students who are taking the test and how that test is structured that's getting as a result that looks like that? Yes.
Now, and then are we able to identify the students by, by name?
Yes.
So, so then we're able to, Jesse Rodriguez is, is having issues. So then, then you're able to then target me and provide me with the necessary accommodations or resources for me to be able to, to get the support that I need? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We're able to drill down to where we can do that?
Right, yes. So I could take, let's just say I could take one of the high schools, let's say I could take Colleyville Heritage and I could say, Dr. Grobel, please tell, make sure I know exactly who your English Two teachers were last year. I can go through and I can pull it that way and drill down exactly to all of their students with their demographic information. And that way, Dr. Grobel and his team can analyze it and say, okay, for these are the different teachers, this is how Jesse did as a freshman, this is how he did as a tenth grader. It may be even backing it further up so they can kind of get a sense of what happened between ninth grade and tenth grade. And so they can figure out, is it something that's going on systemically? Is it something that just Jesse needs? That way they can federally, truly identify that true root cause and come up with a strategy that makes sense. Because sometimes you may have two campuses that look like they have the same problem, but they may not have the same root cause.
Right.
And so it's really important to make sure that you get a strategy that matches whatever their actual root cause of their problem is because it's not always just a one-size-fits-all solution.
Yeah. I'd, I'd be interested to, to see how all this plays out because if we're able to then identify individuals and we indeed can then look to provide. and we indeed can then look to provide intervention services, whether they be, you know, accommodations or whatever it happens to be, prior to then waiting for the test results to find out that we, you know, they still continue to fall through the cracks. You know, I, I'd like to see us start getting ahead of the game, especially if we can identify who these youngsters are. So, yeah, okay, anyway, I, I hear you. Go ahead.
Um, I, I do have kind of another question here. So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, and not that I want to be chasing an A through F rating, but I do understand that the growth measure is actually weighted more, and it's also kind of looked at more as an indicator of just how well the students are doing. Um, and I guess I'm a, a little bit concerned, for example, grade six, um, less than half the kids hit expected or accelerated, um, growth. And in grade four, you know, uh, close, I mean, forty-two percent were, were limited. And so I'm, I'm kind of struggling with these numbers also, that I would be expecting to see more growth. And I, and I get that on the ELA, some of the higher performing kids have been factored out here, but they haven't been factored out in the other grade levels here, correct?
Correct.
And in a sense, some of these are kind of all over the place. Again, that grade four and the grade six, um, the percent limited there, that, that's a concerning number. Um, I, I really would have expected those to, if anything, look a little bit more similar to grades five, seven, and eight, but it, this is kind of all over the place.
I think, too, one thing that might be beneficial is for if I were to send you all, um, the matrix that they use to decide if you're limited versus expected versus accelerated, and all the different ways that they can actually do award the points, and that way you can kind of get a sense of, um, uh, level of concern, and then the way that, the way Texas kind of decides which category that you do, um, that you do fall into.
But this is all just kind of, I mean, this, it's just one subject, though. It is just reading. So it's not like we're looking at, you know, the earlier slides where you had social studies, math, and so on. I, I, I think there's definitely some, some drill down and some, yeah. Concern, I'm concerned about the growth.
And so this one is math? And again, you can see, again, they break it out, limited, expected, accelerated. It's a combination of, did I move between performance levels? Did I go from meets to masters? Did I go from masters back down to meets and so forth through the years? Um, remember, too, that a student who is telescoping has to do the vertical scale score points for all of it. So for example, if last year I took the fourth grade test, but I got to telescope, scope towards two grade levels, and now I'm taking grade seven, I would need to get the vertical scale score points for all of that distance. And so that is one of the challenges and that we do face, and it's, um, they're not going to dissect that out separately. And so if a student were to go to not get all of those vertical scale score points, but telescoped, and maybe they went from, um, they stayed in the meets category both times, it is possible that they would be limit, considered limited growth, but you and I both know that the student is going to great, you know, a year or more above grade level, and I wouldn't necessarily describe them as a person.
The stage, uh, so the, in the foreground here, you see that compacted gray, it's getting ready for the turf, uh, in that seating area there. This is just kind of a, a front view, looking back toward the main entrance of the building, uh, of that amphitheater seating. So really starting to take shape there and looks good. Some more paving around the garden has begun, the landscaping and final paving, all those elements, uh, to follow shortly, so. It is fully stocked, yes, that's a fully stocked pond there. Um, at Mustang Panther Stadium, uh, Lee Lewis has, uh, provided the final graphics now for each of the stair towers. Um, they've been approved. We're gonna, obviously waiting for Paula to get back, and we're gonna set a meeting to review the mockups. I actually saw a bunch of them in Lowell's office this morning, and they, they look good. The mockups look really good. So I think you'll be pleased with that. So that, that installation will, will start shortly. Um, installation of the plast-
Are those stairwells going to be lit?
Yes. Yes, sir. Um, the installation of plastic laminate on a lot of the casework counters continues. Um, there's some reworking of AV cabling, that's ongoing. Um, and then Lee Lewis is also just continuing to work on various punch lists. Um, and so consultants are coming back out now to recheck things that have been asked to be fixed. And so that's, that's ongoing at the stadium. So getting really, really close. Um, as we talked about, the renovations are underway. Uh, they have begun demolition at all campuses. So just kind of walk you through, it's, it's general in nature, but, um, but there's a lot going on. The, at Great Mine High School, the installation of the fire sprinkler system, uh, is ongoing, and you can see there, uh, this week and the following couple of weeks in the various gymnasiums, that'll be taking place. Um, the HVAC boilers and the air handlers and chillers are to be completed for controls, that's ongoing. Learning Commons complete with MakeSafe, that, that's a term that they use to, to, to tie up, um, items that aren't going to be demolished. So they do need to make these rooms and these areas safe for the demolition crew to come in there, and they tag things that aren't to be demo, demolit, demolished. Um, and, and so that's really their MakeSafe process. So that's all happening, uh, in fever right, right now. So, um, six hundred, four hundred hallway furniture is currently being ru- removed, and the demolition is, is underway there as well. Um, you can see on the picture, their framing, the first week, they, they're getting after it. They've hit this very, very hard. Concrete mix designs are to be submitted for review, and this is really the, the recipe for the concrete that's going to be poured back in certain areas that, where you saw cut for plumbing or different areas that get new concrete. So that's ongoing. Um, mechanical rough-in is underway at that yard. Um, the shutdown is scheduled for July eighth. Um, and then they'll cut over and they'll shut down about sixty percent of the building. Uh, and only, the only areas that will stay live, if you will, are the hundred, one hundred and seven hundred halls. Um, and then the HVAC chiller should be shipping to the job site on, uh, the week of the twenty-eighth, so really, really fast. And unfortunately, if you recall, we did the GMP early. Um, they were able to do shop drawings and start the procurement process really, really early, or else really none of this could, could take place on, on this particular schedule. OC Taylor, the, uh, ductwork is currently being demolished. Installation of the round, the new round and square ducts are, uh, happening in the next few weeks. Um, the electrician is beginning their above ceiling rough-in, so all of the new electrical work that's taking place above ceilings happening. And then the demolition of the original and some of the mismatched ceramic tile has been completed. So there's been a lot of work that's happened over the, really since the last time we talked. Uh, Glen Hope Elementary School, um, the fencing for the stage area is now up. They're doing their layout of new walls and locations for all of the new rooftop units. Um, there's, there's a lot of coordination to see, to make sure that there's no conflicts with ductwork and HVAC equipment. Um, conduit runs that began later this week, and then a lot of the metal stub framing for the new walls is ready to start really, really soon. So, uh, lots of prep work there. Uh, you can see a little further shot inside demolition in the Learning Commons, uh, be complete by the end of the week. I don't know, it's kind of, it's kind of strange to see it all gone, but it, it's going to be a beautiful Learning Commons. Um, and then again, the MakeSafe, um, uh, work is ongoing by the electrician and the fire alarm subcontractors. Uh, the acoustical panel is, all of those acoustical panels are, are now out, and then saw cutting. There are several new sinks that we're going to put in for ADA, and, and then some requested sinks. Those are going in, uh, as we speak. Great Mine Elementary, demolition of the Learning Commons, again, existing, uh, ductwork to be removed. Um, acoustical panels are being removed, and I, I don't remember a time in my career where I've had to talk about baby bluebirds. But the baby bluebirds issue is now good. They've gone. And so the, the, the Learning Garden is really close to where the addition's going. And so we were asked, Lee Lewis was asked to hold off until that process happened, and I guess the process has happened. And so they're, they're moving forward with baby bluebirds gone. So, um, at Silver Lake, the demolition of the Learning Commons, again, uh, electrician is, uh, all their materials are starting to arrive. The new ductwork is being measured, it's feel verified, et cetera, and then the metal framing, metal stub framing for the walls is, is happening, and layout's taking place now. MakeSafe of the campus is complete at Dove. Demolition of the walls and ceilings is underway, so there's just a lot of work at Dove as well. Cross Timbers Middle School, um, on the left, a little bit of the demolition work at the front entry, the control vestibule there. Um, and then some ADA ramp right where that, uh, where that piece of equipment is, is, is taking place. The grade beams will be formed and poured this week. Um, Learning Commons walls, all the electrical work, mechanical work, that's taking place. Um, and then some plumbing for the restroom slab, all that's going to happen later this week, so. Colleyville Middle School, flooring protection's been installed. Uh, started saw cutting and remove, um, some of the slab work for some plumbing work, demolition in the break room, and that small administrative area is scheduled to start this week. Again, you can see some more of the demolition work inside and at the Learning Commons, and then, uh, uh, protection of all the flooring as well. So, looks good. So that's, I, I was brief. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. There's just a lot going on.
Any questions?
Good stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Move on to item L, we view the owner contingency expenditures.
Yes, we just have a couple of new items. We'll be subject to your questions.
You have any questions? No, move on to item M, uh, nineteen, twenty, review the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty board planning calendar.
So like, uh, if you look at the June, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, it looked like we were going to move that whenever we, uh, first published this particular document, but, uh, as the week progressed, we, uh, clearly that's, that's out of date, so there are actually no changes to the board plan.
Um, move on to item N, request for reports to the board. Do we have any? Nancy and I move on to, uh, consent agenda for approval. Jesse?
Uh, yes, I'd like to remove, um, uh, for consideration discussion, items J and K. And I'd also, oh, I'm sorry.
Any other, any other items on the consent agenda? No, Jesse?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A through I on the consent agenda, please.
Have a second. Louie, thank you. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Jesse, item J?
Yeah, item J bids for science, technology, engineering, and math STEM instructional related services, equipment, and software. Um, I just would like the record to reflect that I will be abstaining from this vote.
So this is on page, uh, one twenty-six, uh, the bids for science, technology, engineering, and math, instructional related services and equipment and software. Uh, the recommendations for the board trustees to award a proposal for STEM instructional related services, equipment, and software to the following vendors, Accelerate Learning, Cengage Learning, Fisher Science Education, Pasco Scientific, really good stuff, and Texas Educational Solutions.
Uh, do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Dad. You have a second?
I'll second.
Mindy, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero with Jesse abstaining.
Really good stuff is out of Shelton, Connecticut, by the way, so, just so you'll know.
They worked hard on that name. Move on to item K, bid, um, for technology services, equipment, and software supplement?
Yes, uh, I'd like to also announce that I will be abstaining from this, uh, vote as well.
This is the bid for technology services, equipment, and software, and it's a supplemental bid. Recommendations for board trustees to award the supplemental proposal for technology services, equipment, and software to Technology for Education.
Do you have a motion?
Maybe we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy. You have a second?
I'll second.
Louie, thank you.
And I'd like to note they're out of Hewitt, Texas.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero with trustee Jesse Rodriguez abstaining. Move on to, um, announcements. Do you have any announcements? We have summer graduation next.
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
What time is it?
I think we have two or three graduating.
Yeah, I think it's like at five, three, or six. We'll have to double check.
Right. We'll put that in the board update this week about the time.
The other thing, I, I was just gonna say, um, Becky and I happen to be, uh, in attendance at SLI in, uh, San Antonio. And, uh, and of course she was able to attend a couple of days more so than I was, but, um, I will be in Fort Worth. But I would just strongly encourage you all to, that there are some key sessions that you really should plan to attend. The keynote speakers were phenomenal. Uh, one of the things that, and I was impressed on Saturday by the, Saturday by the general session, most folks, a lot, majority of the folks have left, not this time, and Saturday was packed. So, um, and great speakers. So I, I think everyone will benefit. There's some, some, uh, sessions that we really should, should attend because it was very informative.
The early, yeah, the early college, high school dual credit, um, session was very informative. Um, with, um, admissions officers from both UNT and A and M doing the presentation. And then they also did a, a presentation on the, um, superintendent evaluation form, which was actually really good. So, um, not that there's anything wrong with Dr. Ryan, but our forum could use some updating. And that, that was a, an excellent, um.
Yes.
They, they, it, yeah.
We updated our forum a couple of years ago, but it always.
This one's like really new, like, and called, came, developed out of region four with Caldwell and, so, yeah.
I think the remainder of us are all attending this week.
Yep.
Yep.
So, um, starting with legislative updates Wednesday night. Um.
And I heard y'all get Beverly Powell for that.
Oh, that would be great.
She'll be in attendance, or should be.
Right, yeah.
Good. Um, Dr. Ryan?
District offices are closed throughout the week of the fourth.
Yes, sir. District offices. Can, are we gonna be doing a new, um, board photo this summer? A group photo?
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
Uh, we are replacing the, uh, plaque that's, uh, at, uh, the campuses to reflect, um, lead two point O and, uh, possible logo changes and that kind of thing. And we'll use the, um, uh, photo from, uh, last September's event.
Okay.
The one that's out here on the wall.
Great. Um, any other announcements? C and N, any motion to adjourn? Jesse?
Shall move.
You have a second? Mindy, thank you. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero, meetings adjourned at nine thirty-five.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dad.
I have to say that.